Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council, Monday, November 10th, regular meeting. Call to order. I just want to say that everyone on council is present today. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. In a moment of silence, stand if you are able. Okay, let me start with announcements. The first one is Louis 250 website is live. So you just go on www.louis250.com and be in the know. The reason you want to sign in is we are obviously not sharing emails of all of the emails lists we have. You have to opt in to that website, but you're going to want to opt in because you want to, you're going to want to get the newsletter about all the activities that are occurring and they start soon. So please go ahead into the website and get yourself in, let your neighbors and your friends know as well. I have relatives in Italy who just signed in because they just want to know what we're doing. So there are a lot of fun things that are, that are planned. Also, I want to announce that Sally and Frank Powell, who many of you know, are in Louis, England right now. And so we gave them, Ashley put together as our city clerk, an official proclamation that they are our ambassadors to meet with the mayor of Louis, England, or her staff, to just say that we want to reinstate our sister relationship between both Louis's. So for anybody going to Louis, England, let me know, and I can always do that proclamation for you. So we're going to get that connection to, to happen. Any announcements from council? Nope? Okay. All right. Proclamations. As all of you know, tomorrow is Veterans Day, the 11th month, the 11th day, the 11th hour. And there are two wonderful celebrations that are happening at 11 o'clock, American Legion, get down to the post. Half of us will be going to one and half to the other, so that council is present and so are city managers. But the, the other one is where the flags are, what the Rotarians do. Weather doesn't look great, so that's probably going to be inside at Cape Penlopin. But those are two wonderful ways to recognize our veterans. And we also want to recognize, we have a proclamation that our deputy mayor will be giving to everyone down at the American Legion post. I'm just going to summarize it here. It is on our website. It's proclamation in honor of Veterans Day, November 2025. Whereas the contribution and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedom and way of life. And whereas we have an obligation to all Americans who served the United States in all wars with courage, honor, and valor. Where we recognize that the American Legion post 17 family who opens their doors and invites veterans and their families to learn more about our own American Legion and its members. Therefore, I am Roscoe Mayor of the City of Louis, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim our full support for the veterans and their families. As a reminder, there are many tangible ways that we can acknowledge their service, but the easiest is simply say, when you see someone in uniform or a hat, thank you for what you've done and thank you for your families, for what they have done with their love and kindness. Also, this month is the National American Indian Heritage Month, and we have the great fortune of having in Delaware, a number of indigenous native tribes. So we're also recognizing the contributions of the national Native American heritage and the Native Americans and indigenous people of Delaware. Whereas long before the founding of the City of Louis and the state of Delaware, this land was home to the Lenape and Nanook peoples, whose traditions, governance, and stewardship of the environment shaped the region's natural and cultural landscape. Whereas Native American Heritage Month provides an important opportunity for all residents of Louis to deepen their understanding of Native American and contemporary life, fostering greater respect, awareness, and appreciation for the indigenous heritage that continues to shape our city, state, and nation. Now therefore, I am Roscoe Mayor of Louis, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize November as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Louis, and encourage all of you to honor and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Native American and indigenous people throughout Delaware and in the United States. Both these proclamations are on our website, as I mentioned. All right, we have a consent agenda, and I just want to remind the public, we at council know that we are not just because there's a good football game. We are trying to expedite council meetings, all right? What we're trying to do is focus our attention on policies and issues that we need to deliberate, and you need to hear and put comments in. There are a number of items that we deem as administrative. It's not to say that they're not important. It's that our city manager can expedite those. So that's why you're seeing more on consent agenda. But if anyone council, when we take a motion to accept a consent agenda, anyone on council can say, I'd like to pull out one item, and then we can discuss that. So we're not trying to limit what we do in public. We're trying to actually expedite what we do. So appointments that go through our normal process, for example, that would be an appropriate thing that goes on a consent agenda. So here, we have a number of items, appointments, our minutes, our lease extensions. So I'd like a motion on the consent, to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I would like to, I will make that motion, but I would like to bring to everyone's attention that there are a couple corrections that I found for the, in the minutes.
Okay.
I've all shared them with Ashley. They are typographical, kind of, that kind of thing, kind of corrections, nothing substantive at all.
Okay.
And so with, with your awareness that that will be made.
Thank you.
It will be made after this meeting.
That's great.
You'll second?
You'll second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Consent agenda is passed. All right, we'll move to the liaison reports. We'll start with our city manager.
Mayor, it was another successful trick-or-treating in Louis on October the 31st, and this is just one photo that was taken that evening. Our police department was very involved in that event. The King's Highway was shut down, and they were able to interact with many trick-or-treaters, those that are residents of the city and those that came to visit us for that night. So we thank the police department. Mayor, as you mentioned, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and there are many veterans in our community who proudly served and continue to serve our country. And so on behalf of the city, I want to recognize their service and their sacrifice. It is definitely greatly appreciated. There are also a number of city staff who stepped up to serve, and this is our way of acknowledging their service to their country as well as to the city. And so in the Air Force, we had Siobhan Cook in the police department. John Ward was also in the Air Force. He's in our building department. Air Force Reserve was Jonathan Moyer in our police department. Army, Bill Ash, Robert Castellana, Dennis Crawford, Tom Spel, our very own chief, and Nick Yatsko. They were in parking on the police department. Army National Guard, Isaiah Brown, Tyler Minash, both in our police department. Coast Guard, Rodney Reynolds in maintenance. Marine Corps was Rick Melendez, and Navy was John Lafferty. And so I want to thank them again for their dedication and service. And also, I will mention that today, the U.S. Marine Corps turned 250 years old. So it was back in November 10th, 1775. So that's certainly been a number of years. So thank you.
Thank you.
You've already mentioned this, Mayor, but again, this is a push to have everyone sign up for our Louis 250 website. This is to receive notifications of events occurring in Louis in 2026 to celebrate the 250th birthday of America. The city is also still collecting non-perishable food and pet food to be dispersed to people in our community who are in need. So please donate what you can and as often as you can, and it will be taken to local shelters. It's hard to believe, but we have two events coming up that relate to the holidays. The first will be December the 4th, which will be hospitality night. Second Street will be closed for this event. Five to eight is when it occurs, but it is a very nice merchant stay open late and also provide different goodies that people can stop in and see what's, what each store has to offer. And then the Saturday will be the Holiday Parade. It kicks off at 5:00. Be going down Savannah and turning onto Second. It's a very well-attended event in the city, so arrive early to get your spot. We want to recognize a few staff acknowledgements. The first would be to recognize Sergeant Woodard, who graduated from the 20th Delaware State Police Leadership Development Program. This is an intense three-week program that focuses on leadership theories, and so we send him congratulations on this accomplishment.
I think we have that celebrity here with us, right?
Is he?
Come forward, congratulations.
And the other staff accomplishment would be Rick Melendez has been with the city for 24 years on November 2nd. So we thank him for his dedicated service. On October the 14th, there was a ribbon cutting of the mural at the History Museum, Maritime Museum. It's on the King's Highway side of the building. It depicts several areas, eras of Louis' history, from the indigenous people to our shipbuilding history. Michael Rizzato was the artist, and he's a nationally and internationally renowned artist. It's designed to draw viewers into the scene. Does have the same horizon across all of the scenes. Couple grant updates. The city was accepted into the pilot program of the Delaware State Housing Authority Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Pilot Program. And this means that our city code will be reviewed to identify opportunities for affordable housing. The city is continuing to work on identifying tree species and procurement for the IRA grants, which we received $50,000. And the city submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office for certified local government grant of $5,000. We are waiting to see if we are successful in that, but it will provide training and public outreach engagement for the historic district in celebration of Louis 250. Some upcoming meetings. The first will be on November the 13th. This will be at the Bonnie Osler Meeting Room. It's to receive public input regarding the alleys in and around every circle. The next meeting would be the workshop of Mayor and City Council on November 19th at 10 o'clock in this room. And then also on the 19th is a mayor's nonprofit round table at 4 o'clock in the Bonnie Osler Meeting Room to review the nonprofit small and large grant applications. Next meeting of Mayor and City Council is December the 8th, and I will note there will be no workshop of Mayor and City Council in December. Additional upcoming meetings can be found here. The agendas are published seven days in advance to the scheduled meeting date. We encourage everyone in the community to sign up to receive email blasts and/or text alerts, which contain information about city meetings, seasonal services like leaf collection, and even weather alerts. So you can just go to the city's website, click on notify me, type in your email address, and then you can also, if you so choose, put in a cell phone number to receive the text alerts as well. Just a reminder that we still offer bulk trash collection. It will be on Wednesday, November the 26th. You do need to call City Hall to get placed on the pickup list, and there's a $50 cost for the service. Leaf collection, on the other hand, is free, but you still need to call City Hall to, to sign up to get put on the collection.
I have a question on that. I was at the Canary Creek HOA meeting on Saturday, and they're very interested, as you and I have spoken. Do they individually need to call, or can the HOA call? How do you want, how does the city want to receive?
It is best if each property
So you have a by address?
Yes.
Okay.
An update on the outstanding ordinances. The ADU ordinance was a public hearing was held on October the 15th. The Planning Commission is to discuss recommendations for Mayor and City Council during the November 19th meeting of the Planning Commission. The lighting ordinance, this was an ordinance to amend city code for retrofitting, commercial development in public spaces. The working group is evaluating pilot locations for this program. And then the TC, which is Town Center and Town Center Historic Ordinance, the working group is still evaluating this ordinance, and public hearing will be coming in the future. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. That's a lot of activity. Thank you on the staff. Police Department, chief's not feeling well, I understand, so keep your distance. None of us want to be sick over the holidays.
Yeah, my apologies, Mayor. I certainly didn't want to sit there and
No, thank you.
So I'll be brief and then turn it over. Thank you. For the month of October, your police department handled 213 criminal complaints. Four, we assisted the Delaware State Police outside our jurisdiction. Six criminal, six arrests for nine criminal charges. We had a DUI, fugitive breach of release, possession of controlled substance, possession with intent to deliver controlled substance, theft, disorderly conduct, terroristic threatening two times. And the biggest one of the month was we arrested a sex offender for loitering within 500 school, 500 feet of the Fred Thomas Middle School. Six accidents in the city for the month. Only one property, or one personal injury accident, which was at Midland and Cedar, witnessed by somebody on this DS. 129 moving violations and warnings issued for the month. We made 47 business contacts on Second Street, as well as 22 separate foot patrols during the month. There is no reserved mobility parking update because we did not have any applications. Of note, in the month of October, we teamed up with the Office of Highway Safety and the Louis Elementary School for car seat safety check during parent pickup on October 14th. In this room also, on October 14th, we held the second joint Rehoboth Beach Louis Police Accountability Committee meeting. Our very own solicitor, Alex Burns, presented to the group, as well as Sean Moriarty, the post director. As the city manager mentioned, Sergeant Tyrone Woodard, on October 24th, did graduate from the intensive three-week supervisor Delaware State Police Leadership Development Program. I think Tyrone's our fourth graduate from that program, presents a lot of good leadership strategies to bring back to our police department, ultimately benefiting our community. So congratulations again, Tyrone. We also participated in the DEA National Drug Takeback Initiative, and this year we were able to collect 140 pounds of unused prescription medications, which were turned over to the DEA and destroyed. And again, Louis Police Department, as the city manager mentioned, with the assistance of our DEDOP partners, had held a very successful October 31st Halloween event on King's Highway. Our very own Kevin Keane, who's in the audience here, kind of started that initiative.
Three years ago?
Two years.
Yeah. And it's turned out to be great. The community definitely shows out, shows up and, and does a great job for all the kids that trick or treat there. And then one additional thing, it's up on the PowerPoint. I'd like to introduce Corporal Nick Yatsko, who's the School Resource Officer at the Fred Thomas Middle School. Nick wants to give you a brief two, three-minute present, 20 minutes?
25.
25, I'm sorry. A brief presentation.
There is football. Have you heard this from the deputy mayor?
Just a brief presentation on a trauma-informed initiative we've joined with our school district and the Department of Services for Children, Youth, and Their Families of the State of Delaware called Take Care Delaware. Nick?
Thanks, chief.
If Nick is all like his dad, he wants to get home, too.
Yeah. 8:15, guys, 8:15. Hey, everybody. My name is Corporal Nick Yatsko. I'm the School Resource Officer for Louis Police Department. She put me through a week-long public speaking class a couple years ago, so this better be good. So Take Care Delaware is a trauma-informed program that originated in West Virginia. It was called Handle With Care by them, and we just kind of copied that. And what it does, it helps kids who are exposed to trauma outside of the schools get a bit of a, I wouldn't say different treatment, but a special treatment when they return to school from having some sort of traumatic event outside of school. Why is it needed? It was kind of depressing looking, these statistics, but 60% of kids have been exposed to trauma, any sort of, it's a wide definition, but trauma nonetheless is awful, have been exposed to trauma at some point, and 40% of those have been exposed more than once. As you guys know, we're all adults here. Prolonged exposure to trauma is terrible for the kids. It leads to bad behavior within the school. I mean, I, I see it pretty frequently in, in some of our children, and you know, we can kind of address that in-house without any sort of punitive action, which is awesome. They can't focus. They're not getting any sleep at night. They're, they're just, they're not, you know, a whole person when they come to school. And that often leads to a lot of issues with the kids. They're getting punished in school when they, you know, they, no one knows what they went through the night before. And their grades are suffering. They're, they're tardy. They're absent. They just, their, their parents are getting in trouble. They're getting in trouble. It's just not a good situation in general. So how does it work? There's a fancy flowchart for you guys right here. At the very top, you'll see law enforcement in Delaware are mandated, when they go to a call and there's a juvenile present at that call, they are mandated to document that that juvenile was there. And now they're mandated, mandated to document what school they go to. And if the officer deems it to be a traumatic event, there's a little, little fancy checkbox that says, hey, send this to Take Care Delaware. For example, little Johnny saw his parents get into a bad domestic the night before, and they document that he goes to Fred Thomas Middle School. They would send a message to the school district, which is then disseminated to that school, and the principals and counselors all get that. Where it goes from the school sort of depends on the child's behavior. Sometimes they don't want to put the spotlight on that kid, and if he's just moving through the day, you know, they can, they can handle it and it's fine. But if they're having a behavioral episode, they can pull them aside and give them the proper care. So it kind of goes down from there.
And Nick, is that real time? In other words, a child that was exposed to an incident, the school will know in the morning?
Absolutely. So our, by the end of our shift, we have to have our reports in. And when we check that box, it doesn't have, the report doesn't have to be approved or anything like that. They get it overnight, and by the time school is open, it's, it's right there for them. Yeah, it's awesome.
Important.
So what's needed, it's pretty much the same for every other program. You need buy-in from everybody, the police departments, the schools, the mental health providers. Last year in service, I briefed all of our officers on this same program. They're all informed. They're all trained. They all do an awesome job following through on that protocols. And every quarter, we meet with Ms. Pat Chapman, who is the, the head of this program for the state. And you know, she just kind of updates us on the numbers and things that have changed and stuff like that. I don't really need to explain the benefits. We need to look after our kids. They need to be safe in the schools. They need to feel supported just to get good grades. But they're not being disciplined when they don't need to be. They're not, they're not being put through more at school than they're already being put through at home. It builds relationships between us and the schools, and there has been a noted impact on dropout rates and juvenile justice actions since this has come into play, Take Care Delaware. In Louis, last year, well, I guess in the state, there were 3,049 incidents in the state, 4,798 notices sent to schools. We generated four of those. Given our age demographic and size, call volume, that sounds about right. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it for me. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Whoever gave you public speaking training did a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's just really important program. I'm so glad Delaware does this, and you, you do this as well, because, you know, you walk into school and, and someone could so easily be reprimanded for behavior that was all about not sleeping or seeing their parents have a, have an incident. So you are beloved at the schools. I've seen this, and I've seen it on, on Louis Night Out, when all those kids want to throw the ball and sink you in the cage, too. But you are what I remember as a kid saying, oh, that's what police do. So thank you for, you know, you do your job, but you also do it in a way that relates with the kids. It's very noticeable.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So could a trauma event also include like loss of life in the family or something like death?
Absolutely. If, if the child is present, it could be a car accident. It could be a death in the family. It could just be a severe injury in the household. If a child's present, they are automatically sent through. The, they kept the definition of trauma, traumatic event, very loose, just, just in case, you know, but absolutely.
And if there are repeat incidents, what happens? What is the, you know, what does the data show? Oh, we've had to go to this house multiple times. Does it then escalate for social services, or what does it do?
Correct. So DFS is generally called. If there are repeat incidents, not only do we call, but the counselors are calling as well at the school. At any given time, I mean, I've seen for a single incident, four people calling on the same incident. So DFS is very well informed. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'm not trying to feign sickness. I'm a Steeler fan. That was last night. It didn't work out well. Hopefully tonight's better for you.
Chief, I just want, before you leave, I just want to thank you and the complete, and everyone in the police force. We have, we're going to focus a little bit, as you know, on the workshop about the homeless situation, Louis and Sussex County. But I just want to publicly say that all of the homeless folks that I interacted with that were on Second Street for weeks commented how polite and helpful the police department was. Not to say every resident was. There were a few that were not. But they felt that you, your team respected, that they are citizens on our streets. And you also, your team did a lot of good things to let them lighten their load, to offer to move them to where they had housing. So thank you. That was, that's a tough job to help the homeless with all different reasons why they are homeless. But it was just nice to hear from those homeless people how much, how safe they felt related to all of you. And they have now, most of them have found at least winter shelter.
Yeah, they have. Thanks, Mayor. It's nice. We make a pretty concerted effort. You know, homelessness is not a crime.
Right.
It's a condition. And you know, most of those that are unhoused are, are nice people. Yeah. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. Go get well. Okay. Board of Public Works, Tom or Robin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robin Davis, General Manager, Louis Board of Public Works. Just a brief update on a few of our BPW projects. The canal crossing, everything is finally getting closed out, finalized. We're reviewing the last pay-up for that project, and I believe the city's still working with the contractor on the replacement of the trees in that area that were mistakenly removed.
They were planted.
Oh, so it's all good.
Oh, really?
There we go.
They were planted about a week, week and a half ago.
Okay.
That's, that's good news for that neighborhood.
Yes. Yep. As far as the Wellfield Header Project, we did the walkthrough inspection. The list was given, given to the contractor. It was just reported a couple of days ago. The contractor said all the punch list items are all done now. So hopefully, we can schedule a final walkthrough, and that'll be another project off our list. As far as the elevated water storage tank project, there's no, currently no site work happening right now. The contractor's still working at the plants, fabricating all the items. They're looking to mobilize probably early January now due to some scheduling conflicts. But they're still looking to complete the project in September as, as what's on the bid. So we're still moving forwards with that, even though they're delaying the start of the project.
Do you think they'll also take that break like they did this summer because of housing?
No, I think that's what they're trying to
They're trying to get that.
Yeah. They're going to shorten that window up, and, and it's just going to complete to go right on through.
Terrific.
No, it just worked out because of the site work that they could do here.
Okay. Great. That's great.
As far as our combined projects, the Fourth Street, we had briefing done at the joint meeting in October, October 27th. So I don't really have a lot of updates, but just to hit on a couple So I don't really have a lot of updates, but just to hit on a couple of things, GMB had noted the CCTV of the existing sewer and stormwater out there on Fourth Street Park. The sewer portion came out pretty, really good. So it looks like no relining or replacement of the sewers going to be needed for the project, which should save a little time and some money. So hopefully, that's a good thing.
Phase one of the project.
Yeah.
Or phase one.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the stormwater, looks like that's going to have to still be replaced because it's going to require some upsizing and some additional catch bases that need to be put in on the street. Water, that's going to be a full replacement. As noted at the joint meeting, the board will be looking at funding sources for the additional streets in that neighborhood. GMB estimated the project, total project for everything, BPW and city, between eight and nine million dollars for that.
For phase two.
For, yeah, for the additional, for the additional streets, yes. Talking with the state agencies, good indication that supplemental funding would be available, which would save time on the application process. That can be done starting now to get the paperwork together. Won't have to wait until February to submit that application. Potentially, the earliest WE Act meeting you could get on is March. If approved at the WE Act, usually six to eight weeks later, we can sign documents and hopefully get that process moving faster instead of probably waiting until November, which you would normally have to.
Right, so potentially, they could receive this as, I'm going to just say, an amendment, a contract amendment to the existing.
Correct, it would be a supplemental to the existing funding.
That would expedite.
Correct.
Yeah, just to correct myself, I said phase two. It's actually phase two and three that we're combining. It's the next phase.
It's the full neighborhood could possibly be in that amendment to the contract.
Didn't want them.
Correct. As far as, we're still looking at, for the regular project, continuing on as we've been moving forwards, so we can keep that kind of going. As far as Hornkill, again, same thing, GMB's looking at finalizing the design, the concept design. Hopefully, we've been working with them, hopefully, we'll have some sort of final plan together really soon. Speaking with Ben, their anticipated bidding process, hopefully around January, February of 2026. The expected completion date of the complete project, September, October of 2026.
So that's nice, before the end of the year, they will all be on.
Hopefully, but for 2026, yeah, hopefully, they'll have water sewer through the BPW, and well, the septic's will be all abandoned by that time.
Terrific.
As part of one project that we just have going on, it's Cape's Cove, it's another manufactured home park out on New Roads, 13 units. They have a failing septic system, too. We received funding for that. We had the pre-construction meeting the middle of October, moving to talk to the contractor about getting them the notice to proceed, looking for a July 2026 completion date for that project. So they'll be off of septic and wells out there, too. As far as the Hornkill and Fourth Street, they're all on our website, anybody can get info. We update our website all the time with general information, so people, residents can look on our website and find out any information. As far as our meeting, we're not having a meeting in November. We combine our November, December meetings. So our next meeting is December 10th at 4:00 here in the council chambers.
So if I can just talk a little bit about the wastewater treatment plan? And so, I mean, we had the joint, so we had a workshop a week and a half ago. The public was invited. We've asked for any inputs, I think we've only gotten one so far. And so, please, anyone who wants to comment on the material that's up on the web, or was that the meeting, you know, submit it to the BPW website. There's a place for comments. I don't have the benefit of Sharon having the screen up, but it's very easy to find. And if not, you can just call the office. Where we are right now is we're taking the comments we heard during the meeting, the comment that we received, and working on final language to discuss with the county. And then on the December 10th meeting that Robin mentioned, which is our combined November, December meeting, we plan on taking this up for discussion and action if possible. So that's where we are.
I had a question for Robin.
Sure.
Robin, you mentioned the one septic system being replaced. Do we have many septic systems left in the city?
Probably not in the city. Again, because of Hornkill being outside the city, it had septic. There are a few enclaves, I mean, like on the road, there's some that, but they're out, again, they're outside the city. So there are a few areas limited, though.
They're disappearing as they fail.
Yeah.
In our territory, but not in the city.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I see.
So we'd have to go kind of the same processes you would go through with, what we'd do with Hornkill. Hopefully, get them annexed and then get them off septic and wells.
Yeah, it's neat that they have that opportunity to hook up to.
Yes, mhm, yep.
That's really great.
It's a benefit, definitely.
I would just simply add that the University of Delaware's Dauber Campus, which is student housing, it's behind the Fred Thomas School adjacent to it, in between there and Highland Acres, is eight acres with substantial amount of housing, but also on septic. However, they are technically in the county.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. So we could annex them someday, perhaps.
Hopefully, the university.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, one of the things in our work plan is an annexation strategy next year to kind of, which we need to do with you guys to look at, you know, what the utility issues are.
Yeah, anytime you get the septic out.
Yeah, it's better for everybody, yeah, absolutely.
And then the other thing I'll reiterate with Chief Spel said, you know, we did have hazardous waste take-back day. The police department was there for drugs, we took care of all chemicals and hazardous waste, and the city did shredding. So I think it was a great joint event. Stand by for the September. What am I saying, spring?
You got a spring one, you had a spring one coming.
Spring, September.
Yeah, that's how it falls. Thank you. All right, let's go down to the fire department. Chief, oh, glad you were here. Nice, nice to see you in person.
All right. So the total emergencies for the month is 693 we had, just locally. 99 total fire calls, so calls for fire alarms, 29 in the city limits. So right now, we're at 29% in the city limits for fire calls themselves. Total EMS responses is 594, with 179 in city limits as well. So that's 30% of our EMS in city limits, so the numbers are rising.
The numbers are rising, right.
They're rising, yeah. So right now, it's actually 30% of our total calls for the month have been in the city limits. That's on the 6,646 emergencies that we've run so far this year. So we still have two months left.
We have sent that letter to the county.
We appreciate that.
Okay, encouraging the county to fund you.
Absolutely.
Because we do understand you serve that 54 square miles, and it's, you have a huge service area, right? And growing population.
Growing population, especially when they build the two Freeman, and also the Costco down the road, too. That's all our districts, so we got a lot coming.
A lot coming forward, right.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And as we start the comp plan, this is something, city planner, that we look at all of the institutions, and obviously, there's a whole part on public safety that will want to have involvement, obviously with our police department, but also with all of you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Whatever we're here for.
Great, all right.
Chief, before you go, I just wanted to thank, I'll probably be on the next month report. I just wanted to thank you personally for the carbon monoxide emergency I had at my home, for showing up and rescuing me. But, and to encourage every one of our citizens to please have a carbon monoxide detector, because that saved my life.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just like smoke detectors, COs are just as important, just as important at home. I'm glad you're okay. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on to unfinished business. So the first item, I just want to make a clarification, the attachments are correct. But we, in the introduction of it, we said Chapter 197, Section 45, it's also 106, which is definitions, the attachments were correct. So I'd like to give a very brief background, and then I'm going to go to the Planning Commission, the Chair, and the Chair of the Home Occupancy, and then we'll go to City Staff. What we're doing tonight is we are looking at this new concept from the Planning Commission. All right, so we're looking about, do we want, council members, do we want to look at a different methodology by how we look at businesses? So we're not talking about any one business under H number one. We're talking about a different way, a methodology, an approach to look at businesses. And then we'll get to other things. But I just want to be clear, this is specifically about, is this the kind of approach we may or may not use? And we can decide tonight, we can also use tonight as a discussion. So a lot of freedom from the council on this.
So Mayor, for clarification, when you say methodology, there's definitely a methodology behind the ordinance that is being suggested.
Right.
And you're suggesting that maybe we modify this methodology? Or is there a completely different methodology you're suggesting that we look at?
What I'm saying is typically, in Lewis, as most cities, home-based businesses were based on individual types of businesses. Yes, you can do this, no, you can't do this. That, the Planning Commission took a much more comprehensive approach and went and said, what is the new direction of cities? So that's what we're doing tonight, is we're hearing from them so that we can discuss the implications, the pros and cons. But I'll ask the Chair of Planning Commission, and also, or if you would like to delegate that, chair in us to the Chair of the Home Occupancy. You're going to delegate that to Commissioner Keen? All right, Commissioner Keen, thank you for coming. And it's a little bit of Groundhog Day probably for you, because you've been running a lot of meetings on this. But we appreciate it.
Few times, yeah, a few times, it's okay. Thank you for having me. And so, as Mayor said, what you're looking at today is simply the system we recommend putting in place regarding home businesses. We were, we were charged, as you remember, back in 2024 to take a look in general of how, what the zoning law was regarding the home businesses in the city, all home businesses in the city, and how it was developed over time. It was an old ordinance, it used the old traditional method of looking at, you know, trying to identify each individual business and saying whether or not it's good or bad for a home-based business, who would list accountant, law offices, medical office, and try to do it by individual categories. And in looking, we're doing our research with the American Planning Association Research, they recommended taking a different approach, where you identified types of businesses and their impacts, and then break them into various tiers, and then look at, based on that, identify which tier is appropriate for which zone. And so we did that, we identified three different tiers, no impact, modest impact, and potential impact. And then we looked at the zoning map and said, okay, based on density levels and other things, restrictions within these density, these zoning maps, which of these tiers are appropriate for which zones? And basically, the way it came out is that the no, no impact and the low impact are basically, we didn't think, we thought they were appropriate for most, all zones, all housing zones in the city. It was a high impact, potential impact, we limited to, we've restricted them against in high-density areas in zoning laws. And so what you're looking at today is strictly that organizational method of how we're going to do it. And it includes an administrative process, an appeal process for the neighbors in certain tiers. Okay, so Tier Three, if you're identified as the business goes in Tier Three, you automatically start a administrative process, which means you notify, you as the applicant, notify neighbors. Neighbors can, if they're raising objections, then there's a sort of a informal appeal process to the city planner, which the city planner tries to work out an arrangement that satisfies all the issues. If no satisfaction, no arrangement can be made, then the applicant has the right to file for an unconditional appeal, and in which case, they'll go through the conditional appeal process, which has eventually come before Mayor and City Council. And so, and there's also one other provision where in Tier Two, we thought that any businesses that deal, if you identify it as in Tier Two, but you work with animals, we decided that that was appropriate for administrative processes as well.
And that administrative process is handled by the city planner?
Correct.
Right.
The city planner then works with them. Well, what happens is the neighbors, if they have any objections, they send it into the city planner. The city planner then identifies them, gets them together in an informal basis to try to make a resolution. And then through the city planner's office files the appeal if necessary.
Okay, I've got one question that I'll open up to council, because I see the same terminology issue in H Park. Certain rules in H Park about neighborhood, but neighborhood's not really clearly defined. And so what is neighborhood? Is it the street of the house? So how did the Planning Commission and how did your subcommittee look at, what does neighbors mean? The ones that are right next door, across the street? What is neighbor?
So there's a notification process that's already within the city of Lewis, and we're using that one. We didn't, so we didn't try to duplicate or come up with our own, what is a neighbor kind of definition? Okay, we just said, okay, city of Lewis has that notification process in place.
So if, I'll come to you in a second, just have.
The notification process is the same that is used for notification to the Board of Adjustment Applications, which is the adjacent property owners. So if your property touches that parcel of land, that parcel, then you are notified. It does not go across streets, it does not go across right-of-ways. It's following the same process that if you go for, before the Board of Adjustment, it's the same notification for adjacent property owners.
So Commissioner Keen, if you don't mind, I think council's going to have a lot of questions. We can go to the city planner and others, but we've probably got a lot of questions. And you're the one closest to this, so if you don't mind, pull up a chair. Okay, Councilman Elder.
Yeah, so I would really like to see a map in terms of knowing, I understand the general concept here, but I don't know where the potential impact home occupations would fall in a map of Lewis.
Okay, so if you look at the zoning map, that identifies the zoning, the zones, various zones. Janelle, which particular zones would we exclude on the potential impact?
So as part of the ordinance, there are, the table of permitted uses would also be updated to identify, so a no-impact home occupation would be permitted. I need to zoom out, I've zoomed in too far.
On all the zones, all of it.
In all of the residential zones.
Same thing with low.
But a potential impact is only allowed in certain zoning classifications, because they have identified maybe that is not appropriate for the R1 density. I'm trying to look, it looks like that would be more appropriate for the limited commercial. The potential impacts would be more limited commercial, because again, you're a commercial, you're a residential and a commercial zone, the R5 zoning classifications. So it's also based, again, in the attachment on the, is an update to the permitted table, the permitted use table saying which of the impact, which of the categories, the no-impact, the low-impact, or the potential impact, could that use then end up? And the more restrictive the potential impact, the fewer zoning classifications they are allowed in. Because they saw that as being a potential, again, a potential impact, so you want to protect that residential neighborhood. So in maybe the R3 zoning district, you don't want a potential impact. Or in the R2, you don't want that in potential impact. But maybe in the R4 and the LC, where you have a higher density and you have more commercial uses in those areas, that it does make sense. And that is all something for consideration by mayor and council. These are the recommendations brought forth by the Planning Commission, based on their recommendations and research about where the different categories of the potential home occupations would be most appropriate.
So, so just to go along with it, so areas that are in HOAs, if they're in HOA, are they automatically excluded?
This doesn't cover HOAs, by far as I know.
Yeah, this is just based on the zoning classification. If there's a homeowners association, and that homeowners association prohibits a home-based, home occupation, that is the homeowners association's issue, it is not a city issue. That is a private deed restriction that the city does not enforce.
So in those, the tiers themselves are, if you look at what they're, the difference between the tiers, how they, it's number of employees, foot traffic, parking, whether or not they require off-street parking, and those kinds of things. And so you looked at those things that were impactful, that could potentially be impactful to our neighbors. And you say, okay, where was the most appropriate place for this particular tier based on those potential impacts? And so we said, well, high-density areas, we don't want the high-density neighborhoods. We don't want the high-potential-impact businesses and. we don't want the high-potential-impact businesses in those particular zone. Otherwise, though, they're all in all the other residential zones.
Other questions from council?
I have a question I'd like to raise. In the administrative process, what tools do you expect the planner to use when he or she is in effect adjudicating an application?
Well, I think, I think eighty, ninety-five percent of the issues, it's by my experience, are communications issues. So let's open up the branch, the lines of communication between the neighbors, find out exactly what the issues are. And they could be this simple, just, you know, hours of operation, or, you know, make sure you close your fence, or whatever it may be. It could be something very, very simple. And as you know, most of these issues are, end up being communications issues. And so we envision that the planner would be simply to sit down with those neighbors, sit them in the same room in a continued way, and just say, okay, what are the issues? Can we work out a compromise here? Can we work out something that satisfies all your concerns? And if not, then you go into, then it goes into the formal process. And so, but we thought it was important to have that sort of off-track opportunity, because A, it costs money to make the appeal to the conditional use, right? It makes money, it costs money to do that appeal. So there had to be, we thought it would be good to have an opportunity to be sort of an informal way to reach an agreement between neighbors who probably just aren't communicating.
I have a question about parking. Did you look at some businesses, some home businesses would require parking, meaning there's an employee, but some home businesses could be temporary, you know, like you're dropping off your child at a daycare, or maybe you have, I don't know, hair salon. So in other words, it's not permanent, it's not parking for an hour. Did you look at parking in your impact tiers in what is a need for parking for hours versus drop-off customers?
We looked at it sort of both ways, Mayor. I mean, so a lot of this is going to come down to the individual business, okay? What is the operation of the individual business? Okay? So do they envision people parking or just dropping things off? Do you envision, and so you don't want to sort of overgeneralize and restrict these businesses. That's the other thing about these ordinances. And if you look at the APA report that you guys have as part of your package, one of the big things they talk about is you don't want to be overly restrictive. You want to be welcoming in many ways to, and not be overly restrictive in these. And so we didn't want to really put that, well, is it an employee parking, or is it a concept of a drop-off parking issue? It really comes down to the individual business. At which point, it's really up to the planning department to make a judgment call about, okay, what tier is this particular business based on what we believe to be the potential impact on parking? Okay? Now, in Tier Two, doesn't require off-street parking. Okay? Tier Three does.
When you refer to tiers, somewhere it's also A, B, C, and then some places it's one, two, three. I just want to make sure that we're all thinking the same.
Tier One is the low-impact.
Yes.
Tier Two is the low-impact.
It's A, B, C in your ordinance.
It's A, B, C in the ordinance.
Yes. So A is no-impact.
Gotcha.
You don't even know they're working there.
Right.
B is the low-impact. There may be an employee, somebody may be coming, it may be that home daycare where they're dropping off and picking up twice a day. And then the C is the potential impact, where you have more employees, you have more people coming to the site, you've got vehicles staying for a longer time.
Blue, we pulled down the B for you.
C, potential-impact home occupations was limited to, limited to commercial and R5? Isn't that what you said?
I may have misspoke. I was trying to read, I'm going to admit, I was trying to read that screen and this screen, and, but it is in your packet, it was attached. But Blue, if you can bring that up and we can go through.
Hold on a second. Janelle, so if you go to B, in answer to Mayor's question regarding parking, what we looked at was, businesses shall not generate parking demand inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. Okay? All right? Now, if they're greater than that, then you may want to consider going to Tier C tier.
And that's an issue that I've been thinking a lot about. We have kind of a parking problem here in Lewis that we still really need to address. And when you start thinking about some of the residential neighborhoods that don't have enough parking now, how is that going to impact them? We're kind of doing this without thinking about that. It'd be really nice if we had a parking plan in place that would shelter the residents a bit from this sort of thing. But we have some streets that, I'm thinking of one street right now, that only has like nine parking spots on the entire street, and, but there are like 12 homes. And so how do you justify that when people have to go two blocks from the home to park when right now it's residential? So I kind of feel like we need to really address that, too, because it's a major impact on residents and residential areas. So I like the idea, I really believe that no-impact is awesome. But then, too, it starts to really.
And many, though, so we look at this, most home businesses are going to be no or low-impact. Most of them are going to be there. Okay? And so as far as parking is outside the character of a neighborhood, so does this business add parking demands that's outside the character of the neighborhood? Okay? That's a question that goes down to individual neighborhoods. Okay? And that comes before the planning planner, she says, this will create parking that's outside the character of this particular neighborhood, therefore it's not appropriate or has to go to Tier Three, whatever.
How do we adjudicate that, as Councilmember Richard said, in a way that is fair, consistent, and documentable, so that we don't have different things happening all over?
So let's run through that scenario, because that's key to this. So somebody comes in and they have something at a higher impact. Walk us through, City Planner, how this process works, how is council, or Commissioner King, you can as well, explain to us the arbitration process and steps.
So the first thing is somebody's going to try and submit for a business license, hopefully. And then if we were identified that it's in residence, then it would come through me, and I'd reach out to them. It's like, hey, can you tell me about what you're trying to do? How many employees do you have? What are your hours of operation? You know, what's a typical day like? Do you have a high-level business plan I can take a look at? Like a sheet, you know?
You're the first.
First line of defense.
You're the first gate.
You're the first gate they have to go through. The gatekeeper.
Okay.
And then it's like, okay, well, it's just you. You paint, and you then take, you know, you do crafting, and you, you know, it's the holiday season, you're taking your stuff to a craft show. You're no-impact. Nobody's going to notice you coming and going. You may get an extra, you know, delivery shipment now and again, but it's the holidays? Who's not getting an extra delivery shipment?
Right.
You know? So it's like, okay, that doesn't quite need something. All right, I'm a financial institution, I am an accountant, and I'm working from home. Okay, where am I located? Do I have an assistant that comes in at tax time? If I have an assistant coming in at tax time, do I need, do I need an extra parking space if they're going to be there, you know, half the day, three days a week? Where is that property located? Because in certain neighborhoods, there's literally no, there's no parking. And if you don't have a driveway, I think if you have a driveway, solves a lot of the issues. If you don't have a driveway, how many employees, and what are you expecting? Again, what's that business plan? Are your clients coming off to drop off their taxes, or are they coming to stay every, for a half hour, 45 minutes to an hour, depending on what they need? And then it's like, okay, well, maybe then you do need that, an extra parking space, or need to make sure you have off-street parking. So then they fall into that category. And if they then need off-street parking, they fall into that potential-impact category. Then it's like, okay, we're going to send a letter to your neighbors.
Well, they do.
They do. They send a letter. They send a letter to their neighbors, their adjacent neighbors. They get a time period, and this has, this actually, this process does actually work in other jurisdictions. I've had experience with this one. You send a letter, if you don't get a response, we're going to issue that business license, per the criteria that, if there's any identified. Usually when there's a complaint, it's either the neighbors do not like each other, or they don't understand what you're trying to do. And most of it is, I don't understand, I got this letter, I don't understand. It's like, all right, let's have a conversation. They want to have, you know, a construction company and have their employees come there every day, and then they leave every day. So there's a couple of vehicles that are going to sit out in front between, you know, eight and five every day, and then they leave. Like, oh, okay, that makes sense. And sometimes it's not. It's like, okay, can we work on those hours of operation? Sometimes we can get to agreement, and then sometimes it's like, we cannot. And then that's where the applicant has that decision. The applicant has the decision, do I make that application, do I stop, give up, go find somewhere else, get a storefront or something else? Or do I make that application for the conditional use application, which requires review before the Planning Commission, and then Mayor and council has the final authority on that conditional use. And then Planning Commission can grant, or make a recommendation with conditions, number of employees, hours of operation, number of vehicles, and then Mayor and council has that final decision.
So you have the tools, in this, the way you've described it, you have tools, parking, hours of operation, you have tools that you can try to get to common ground with these applicants.
Absolutely.
But there's still a process that they can go through, Planning Commission to council?
Correct. If we cannot get to common ground, and the applicant wants to continue to move forward with that home occupation, that is where the conditional use, and that goes through the full public hearing process.
And Mayor, when it gets to the conditional use process, remember that you, as the final authority here, can put other conditions on the property. Limit the hours, limit the number of customers come in per hour. You can put those restrictions on it, and those restrictions, you would do that based on this particular neighborhood and this particular business. Okay? And to Joe's point, you would then adapt it, you would use this ordinance to adapt that business, and put the restrictions that are necessary, based on neighborhood concerns, whatever it may be. Right? So you could do that, you've had final authority.
Okay.
So Janelle, would you consider, would there be a way to use our parking staff or our police to help you gather information about the neighborhood so that, because they really understand what streets are problematic?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to do that. We also have that parking study that a former council member did, so we have some of that information for a certain area, and then working with the police department and parking, the parking ambassadors, to identify areas of concern. I think we all know where, in certain times of the year, where we have more parking concerns than others, and maybe that's the flip of the home occupation. If I'm a crafter and I'm going to have like maybe an open house, I'm not going to have it in the height of the summer season, they typically are hitting right about now. So maybe, oh, that does make sense that there's, we know, in certain areas of the city, there's available parking at this moment, where in other seasons there's not. So it's taking all of those into consideration based on everything. It's a holistic approach and a holistic view of everything.
So what happens if my neighbor is making wedding and birthday cakes? Okay? And he or she is so successful that when she first applied, she said there'd only be one person part-time helping me bake an ice. Okay? But she's so successful. Now, as a businesswoman, if you're that successful, you would actually get commercial space, because you actually want to move into the retail world. Okay? Let's be honest, that's how businesses work. But I'm sure that there could be some people that are saying, well, wait a minute, she said there was only like one person, how would we be enforcing, is that just a neighbor calling into the city to say, you know, I support that there's a cake baking business next to me, but now there seem to be five cars there every day because she's wildly successful? What happens then?
And again, the city is complaint-based. The city does go out and do proactive enforcement, but the city is also complaint-based. So if their complaint comes in, we can give that person a call, because we'll have their contact information, go, hey, what's going on? And if they then hit and like, oh, they've triggered, or maybe it's just like this one month, they got 10 weddings, and, you know, it's like, okay, I understand that. But if it's like become that, it's like, okay, you now have moved up into the different, the next category, or at some point, you are no longer a home occupation, you need to find that storefront or that other facility to run that business, because at that point, you've outgrown your house.
Yep.
But in that example you just gave, if the business grew like that, and that you're moving from your low-impact to C, potential-impact home, right? That's the next one up?
Yes.
What is, what does that process look like? In other words, you know, the requirements or descriptions that are offered in potential-impact home occupations is more stringent, right? And if the business is an ongoing concern, and has reached that level of success, what does, what do, what do you have, what tool do you have to be able to move them from their neighborhood into a strip shopping center?
So the city doesn't have that ability to go tell them where to move, but work with them, and it's like, okay, if they go from, from Level B, the low-impact, into a potential-impact, they then have to notify their neighbors. And they violated their license. They violated their license, which the city can always revoke a city's business license.
Exactly. Yeah. But is that going to really happen? How, do you really think that's going to happen? I mean, where, I don't see in here where there is that description of revocation.
So this whole section has a violation and penalty section?
Yeah.
For that entire section?
Well, that's what I have in front of me.
It's not, so I apologize. When I say section, I mean article of ordinance. So when we're talking about, it's article four use regulations, sometimes I cannot read, there are use restrictions, accessory uses, ADUs, temporary uses, prohibited uses, all of those categories are in that article. So at the end of that article has, it has references regarding violations and penalties.
So for example, just common sense, if I'm applying for a home business and I get a license, if we just have on that document, your license allows this, if it is determined that in fact you are not functioning under that, the city reserves the right to revoke your license. In other words, we would have to be very clear that there is a consequence if they're not doing what they have said they're doing.
Yes, and that's actually in the business license section of code, not in the zoning section of code. And I can't seem to find the violation penalties, but I know in overall, in 197, there is a violation penalty. So if you're not in compliance with this section, there are actions the city can take.
So Mayor, you're exactly correct, the reapplication process for a business license could be a way to handle this. Business licenses are annual, so there could be a box to check certifying that you're complying with the zoning code.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to the, one of my biggest concerns is the notice to adjacent property owners. And the idea that abutting or adjoining satisfies notification, that doesn't meet my expectation of notice.
That's certainly debatable, Tim. I mean, I, you know, you could take a look at that, but again, that's part of a broader look at the city ordinances. Because that is the notification process you have in place now. So this particular draft you're looking at now doesn't have, doesn't spell that out, because we're simply adapting it to what the city has available now. So to whatever point you have a criticism about what the notification process is, that's a broader question for the city to look at for all its notifications, not just this particular ordinance.
But we do have notifications for other ordinances which are measured in linear footage. And in this particular section of code, it's measured, we're using this description of adjacency, adjacent property owners, and abutting and adjoining apparently are the two, you know, trips, or the two triggers, if you will. And I think that that is.
That's an example of something we could say we want it tightened up.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, we could take a look at the Planning Commission and get back to the recommendation to you about what your notification process is.
Also something Mayor and council can just say, because typically, it's, the two references in code are adjacent, which is what the Board of Adjustment is, or it's 200 feet.
Correct.
And there was discussion that maybe 200 feet was a little too much for a home occupation. So the Subcommittee and then Planning Commission went with the adjacent, because it's like, who's really going to be affected by the noise, if there is any, or the extra delivery vehicle? Typically, your adjacent neighbors, which is why they went with the adjacent. But if you want to go 50 feet, 100 feet, you know, that is something that can be considered.
Councilwoman Brown Hicks, I think you're going to want to say something.
And I wanted to also tie into what Councilperson Tim mentioned about the adjacent notification. So it was mentioned that the applicant is responsible for notifying the neighbors. How do you assure that that has happened?
They actually usually have to provide proof that the notification was sent, so then it goes into that file. So just like with the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment and like, and most applications that go through the Planning Commission and Mayor and council, the applicant that go through the planning commission and mayor and council, the applicant is responsible for sending those notices. And then they have to provide proof that those notices were sent. It's typically, again, green return receipts certified. So we can say, yes, they actually mailed it. And yes, if some people will sign it, some people will not sign it. So if somebody says, I didn't get it, but you signed it, then we can go, you know, you did receive this. So it is, we do follow that process and that has have to be. And that is, I think, something we could add to this if you want to that clarification, is the applicant must provide proof to the city planner that the notification was sent.
I think that's a good, that's all those comments. I also want to make a comment just kind of in general. First of all, thank you for taking this on, okay? Because this wasn't easy. I also think that we as a body have to look at, what is the future of entrepreneurship? All right? So the rule changed after COVID, okay? And there's a new generation that is very interested in entrepreneurship. And if we're going to attract younger people, younger professionals into Lewis, it's expensive to live in our city. And so having some sort of income related to a home business may be one of the ways that they can actually be here and we can invite in a younger generation. I mean, I think that's where the American Planning Association is really saying, what is it about businesses? It's about impacts, but this is a way that individuals could come into Lewis and say, I could do this business in addition to this and maybe then I could afford it. And to me, that's this, it's hard at my age, honestly, I think I'm the oldest in council, to think about this next generation of entrepreneurs. That's what I've been. I've been an entrepreneur. I never had the opportunity to do that except for a bed and breakfast. So I look at this and say, even though I've got questions, I'm intrigued by what this is trying to accomplish.
Yeah. And a lot of this is just putting structure to existing, those existing opportunities out there. People, they have home businesses out there now under the old ordinances. But that's a real haphazard approach, okay? It's a real, and it's come and go because businesses, to your point, change. And they've changed significantly since COVID. That list, if you go through the existing list of home businesses that are allowed or not allowed in the city of Lewis, it's outdated. It's way outdated. And so rather than go through it every five years or six years and try to pick your brain to figure out what particular business is what should go where, just set the parameters so that businesses sort of sit within parameters as opposed to with individual, those kinds of specifics.
Other comments from council? And then Chair Ennis will have you come up to.
I did have one other question. It's in the categorically prohibited home occupations. And I just would like further definition on it and want to know if this is already in code? And if it isn't, should it be? It says categorically prohibited occupations, rooming and boarding houses. And with, with our current rental situation, that triggers some thoughts in my mind. I mean, if somebody lets someone stay overnight for a week, is that a rental? Or is it a rooming house and a boarding house? And how does that? It's just there and it just makes me wonder.
Those are defined, aren't they, Janelle? In the, there are definitions behind those.
Well, do we have it in our code that we have no rooming or boarding houses allowed?
We do, and I can get you that definition. It comes from state code. We just copied state code on that one.
But in our, in our own code?
Yes, it's in our code.
It's in our code.
But it's not prohibited as a home occupation. But under three, it says categorically prohibited home occupations.
This would make it prohibited.
So our current.
It could be an occupation, but not a home occupation. It could be a rental.
Oh, could a boarding house? And what you're saying is, under this potentially new code?
Yeah.
This cannot be a home business, but are you saying, could it be a business? No.
That's what I'm saying.
It cannot.
I can, can I get a rental license and rent a room?
No, because you're not allowed to rent rooms in the city of Lewis. And this was just making it an extra, an extra prohibition to make it very clear that that cannot happen.
I mean, I think that list on three, the categorically prohibited home occupations, adult entertainment, restaurant bars, nightclubs, medical clinics, hospitals, nursing care facilities, automotive repairs, sales and gas stations, okay? Rooming and boarding houses, kennels, stables, veterinary clinics, animal hospitals, manufacturing and funeral homes and undertaking facilities. Those things, no. It's a big no to those. I just want to think the public should, should hear that. Chair Ennis, did you want to make a comment?
Just a quick comment. And first of all, I just want to commend Commissioner Kane for the great work that he did with the subcommittee that I had served on on this. We really do want to preserve the residential character of neighborhoods. But as the mayor said, but also acknowledge what has already occurred within our community. And give opportunity for people to, to, to come into compliance with that, to, just to, so that our community is not just lagging behind, but is looking ahead to what, what are, what opportunities are people going to have to have economic opportunity to allow them to live in our community? So the final thing that I would say is that a lot of work went into this. We had two planning commission meetings at which this was discussed. We had, I don't know, numerous subcommittee meetings in this room. Great assistance from the city planner. And I hope that we've given you something, some grist to work with. I can already hear from the questions that there's going to be a lot of good refinement going on here. But I think it's important that we get something into ordinance. And I think we've given you a good basis for that start.
Yeah. No, thank you for that effort. So Alex or Janelle, just keeping the list of some of the things we've raised, I'm just summarizing. But there may be more. That notice to neighbors, clearly, we want to, we want to really look at that. And that might be, as Commissioner King says, that might be broader than just this. Seems like somebody who lives right across the street might want to have a voice, okay? So, so let's look at that. And then we want to make sure that, that the applicant understands we can revoke their license if they're not, there's enforcement. Those were two in particular. Other things that council members want to comment on.
Would that be an annual license?
Yes, annual license.
They have to apply and pay for it every year?
It's your standard business license?
Yep.
We might need to tweak it to say if you're a home occupation and then what level it qualifies for? Because that way then we can address the, it goes from, from one level to another and we can track that. And it's like, then how do we encourage you to grow without becoming a complete business? And I think there's also, again, some of that is restricted on, is there square footage requirement? Yes, it's not more than 10% or 300 square feet of the house.
That itself is going to be so limiting for the successful business, okay?
I mean, if you're a tax accountant and your business has grown so much that you have multiple clients, I think that's probably a pretty good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Right.
They have to move and rent office space somewhere.
One other thing I think we should add, I don't think it has to go in the ordinance unless our solicitor wants it there. But that whole arbitration, you've heard us, a lot of us ask you, Janelle, that you're going to be, if this passes, you, the city planner, will be running a process. And we don't want it to be arbitrary and capricious, nor do you. And so documenting, so if I apply, and it's, clearly, it's going to have some impact, that the applicant sees the process, including if you have to go for conditional use, there's a cost to that. So documenting the steps, I think, just is clarity. And also calms those that are a little bit worried about.
I think you could always create an application process.
Perhaps we could include a sentence stating that, you know, the applicant is required to provide proof of the fact that they notified their neighbors and failure to do so is incomplete application, something like that.
Okay. So I, the way my brain's thinking is if you're in that category, the C-section, the potential-impact, we're going to create a file number, so maybe an HO-dash-something for each year, so a home occupation. And then, so we have all that documentation, all that information, so we can then, you have that file, the electronic and paper file or however. So we can, one, track how many we have and then see, and make sure we are complying with all the requirements in the code.
I also think, I think it was Chair Ennis that mentioned it, but we don't even know how many are already there, okay? All right? And so it's not like we're creating a program to say, come to Lewis, start your business, okay? That's not what this is about. This is about managing the impacts of home business, recognizing that home businesses will be increasing to some degree. But it's also verifying those home businesses. It's giving us a tool that we really don't have right now, should someone run amok related to six people parking on their street. So I think it also has some other merits in terms of a new way to.
Setting up a process right now. I mean, setting up a process. And then, so anybody comes in, not just people who are setting up the businesses, but their neighbors, their community, they understand what the process is and they understand where it's going to go and they understand what the city's role is in.
So I've got a question about continuity. So I'm going to use cake because I don't think cakes are very controversial, okay? So I'm making cakes. And then I give up and I'm going to move somewhere else. I sell my house. That license was attached to me, not the property.
Correct.
I just want to, I know the answer to that, but I want that in the public, okay?
I'm glad you spoke to that because that conditional use does not run with the title.
It does not run with the title.
It doesn't run with the land.
And we seem to always have those questions.
It terminates with the, yes.
Thank you very much.
And as part of their, part of the law, the ordinance is, they can't change the interior of the business to, that's outside the scope of a residence, okay? You can't make the inside renovation so that it can only be used commercially, for instance. It stays a residence. It's downstairs, it's still a residence. So it's not an office, you know, in the next hill.
I do, I am a little bit concerned about the HOA section. If we believe that our residents have a right to run a home-based business that's a one, a two, or a three, and those areas fall under the qualities of a one or two, they're being denied an opportunity by their HOA. And aren't they citizens of Lewis, not of the HOA? So I have a hard time excluding people in an HOA. I really do.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Isn't that exclusive?
Did you finish?
So the HOA can put additional, sorry, restrictions on top of the city code, as long as they're consistent.
It just doesn't seem quite fair.
And the other part about that, councilman, is the fact that it's putting more pressure on those parts of the city which are not governed by HOA.
Correct.
It's, it's bringing the pressures of these home businesses.
Or the opportunities. Depends how you look at it.
Well, I understand. But, well, I'm going to describe it as pressures. I'm not saying, you know, one way or the other. I'm just describing them as, you know, pressures. It is possibly impacting those neighborhoods. That's all I wanted to get. Whereas other ones by covenants, by decovenants, are exempt from this law.
It's how HOAs work. It's just how HOAs work.
Yeah.
And there's a reason why HOA.
It's the have-nos kind of thing, right?
It's HOA law.
So what I would say is, I know none of us are a fan of ruling on an ordinance as we're drafting it. That's just not good practice. But I think this conversation's been very helpful. So what I would, what I would propose is that we ask the city solicitor and the city planner to tighten up some of the language based on the comments you all have had. And that we revisit this at the next workshop because I think we've, and then, and then we can look at, what are we voting on for or against or adding conditions? So does that make sense? Yes? Okay. All right. So do I need a motion to have to do that or can we just say, no? I'm deferring it. So I'm deferring it, but I don't want the audience to think I'm just sending it down, kicking it down the road. I'm really saying ordinance decision-making should be when you see the document and you look at it and you analyze it, not on the fly.
So we'll be doing this presumably on Wednesday, November 19th?
Yes. So let's put that, so it's on for any further discussion and possible action, okay? Well, good. This is how I think we should look at new ordinances. And thank you again to the planning commission and Commissioner Keen, to your subcommittee. You looked at a lot of, you did, you did the work we asked, so we can just refine with some of our questions. And thank you for the briefing as well. Okay. Are we ready to go to new business? I'm watching that clock for you guys. Okay. Discussion and possible action on recommendations from the ordinance review ad hoc committee regarding canal excavations. Dennis Riordan, you are on. Thank you again for taking this whole area for us.
Dennis Riordan, 1302 Bay Avenue. First, let me say my apologies. The document that was attached to the agenda is not the proper document. It does not reflect the changes that our committee recommended for, I don't know how that happened, but I'll take responsibility. And we have to go back and make sure that the, probably in December, we're going to send two or three to you guys. Hopefully, we'll have it ready before the December meeting and then you can pile two or three on at the same public hearing. But this is not ready for primetime.
Okay. Do you want to brief us on any part of it or we can just wait?
Well, there were, there was additional language that was, the committee came up with. And the shift on it was to change the approval from the city council to the city manager or her designee, which cleaned it up. And then it also, in here, it does require the applicant get permits from Denrec and the state, the feds and the state before they, before they can get, file an application. So it puts things in better perspective. So, yeah, it'll, it'll be nice when it gets here. It's all done. It's just the wrong copy got sent to you guys.
And I just want to, for Councilman Brenix, the reason why this subcommittee is about this issue, that's how it was formed, because Mayor Williams and council, we were looking at decisions that we had no voice on. It was Denrec and it was taking up our time and it was because of our code. And I know the planning commission also had parking issues related to old codes. So to me, this is the gift of why you are doing what you're doing.
Yeah, we haven't gotten too many to you, but we're working on a couple right now that.
No, Dennis, thank you.
To do good.
Yep. We'll get you on the next agenda.
All right. We'll see you in December. See you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go on to I-2, discussion and possible action regarding the definition of kennels under city code 197-45. Deputy Mayor Saliba and Kevin Keen, you're not, you're not off the hook yet, okay? So let's talk about what this is as well. Do you want to start us off?
Well.
Do you want to? So, so as part of the review of the ordinance we just discussed, there is, the council asked us to look at the definition of kennels. And this was prompted by an application that came before city regarding a dog grooming business and that was denied. And the question became, for this specific question, it was whether or not it's appropriate or not to have a dog grooming business under the home-based businesses ordinance. And so we looked at how kennels were defined nationally, the APA rules. And for the most part, dog grooming is excluded from the kennel operation. Most, many cities have, allow dog grooming within their home-based businesses with restrictions. They put restrictions on hours, you know, parking, whatever it may be. But for the most part, it looked like to us that putting that under the kennel restrictions, kennels are overnight, most part, they're barking dogs overnight, all hours of the day. So we thought that it made more sense to exclude them from that restriction. And as well as the training, the training restriction as well was redefined under kennels. So that was just part of this definition. Again, it was a separate question for us that we initially attached to that ordinance, but you guys have agreed to take a look at it separately.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor, any comment?
No. I mean, other than I think this is a, was, was just like other parts of the code, whether it's, you know, a whole host of issues, but in particular, home occupation businesses and definitions, this needed to be updated. As simple as that.
I want to make clear too, though, that this is not about a specific business application. This is not in regard to the application.
This is about a definition.
This is about broadly, whether or not you believe, the city believes, whether or not dog grooming should be allowed within the home occupation ordinance. That's all. It's not about that specific application at all.
Right. And it does, as you said, when you look at the old definition, everything appears to be a pet spending a lot of time, okay? Overnight, it's boarding, it's breeding, and so you're cleaning this up for us.
Just cleaning it up.
Okay. All right. All right. Comments about this?
I mean, I'll just, I'll just reiterate, you know, what I said earlier. I think this is, you know, a much-needed refinement and a more detailed look at definitions. Definitions are important. I mean, going back to the original, the original path that we're pursuing is we're not going to have a list of multiple businesses. Businesses evolve. I mean, what we have now is. I mean, what we have now is determining, and what we want to determine, you know, how these are going to impact. That's the key word, to me, is impact. And we want to make sure that we're protecting the integrity of neighborhoods and neighbors and others, but we also want to be flexible, but not be so bound by definitions or names of businesses that are prohibited in others. We can be more detailed, and I think it is, why businesses are prohibited to begin with has to do with impact. And so let's go with impact and figure out what we're talking about, the tier one, tier two, tier three. I think all, you know, I think Commissioner Keane and his team have done, and of course, with the assistance of Janelle Cornwell, who's really helped a lot, this is, I think we've come a long way on this whole issue, and I think we're getting close to the finish line.
I concur with what you said. I think the impact is really important, and it's really a much better way to look at it, the impact. And we maybe need to redefine how it does impact some of our areas, you know, make sure that it's fine-tuned. But one thing that I think might be helpful to our public in general, and I think this article that was passed out this evening to us is really excellent. It talks about impact, and it focuses just on impact. And I know it was put on the website for the Planning Commission, but it would be nice if we could append it to our meeting notes for tonight's meeting for the general public to see, because it's excellent. It really is great.
So can we ask the manager to do that? So I just want clarity on what it is from our solicitor we are doing tonight. Are we just looking at the definition on this item? We're striking what you see on the screen in red. Under the definition of kennel, we are striking grooming and training. That is the only thing that's in front of us tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mary. So this is under Chapter 197-106 definitions.
Okay.
And it would be just the definition of kennel, animal kennel.
Okay.
And do I understand that this is a recommendation that has come from the LPC, the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And our city planner wants to comment on that.
No, I just want to make sure. The other two definitions in blue are proposed and are also part of the other ordinance, but we thought we'd put them all together so you can see how it breaks up.
Oh, I see what you're doing. You took out, you took out the two that are in red, and then you, and LPC defined them. So we're really looking at the blue and the red.
Correct. So the blue are actually new definitions.
Mm-hmm.
And then anything in blue in animal kennel is also new.
Okay.
Was added based on public comment, research, and discussion from the Planning Commission. And those, again, are recommendations.
Thank you for that clarity. Okay.
So when you put the new definition in, one thing that isn't in there is size, mass of the business. Will that be determined during, would that be determined during the application?
It is. 10% and 300 feet, right?
Well, no. What I mean is, if I'm going to groom 10 dogs at a time versus two, or, you know, the amount.
It all depends on when it's going to, and if that is something, if you are concerned about pet grooming, and you want to add to the definition of pet grooming, you can add the number of animals that can be groomed at one time, and you can do that to the definition. Because you're looking holistically, should pet grooming be allowed within the city of Lewis? Doesn't matter where, yes or no, should the city of Lewis have grooming? Because animal kennels are prohibited in the city of Lewis. So should the city allow for somebody to train an animal? And that's where I think you can add how many animals, and again, we're not talking just about, you never, train a cat, train a pig, train a guinea pig.
I wish you could train cats.
They don't like it. They're very particular. But you can groom a cat. So it's like, I think that's where you can say, you know, if you want to allow pet grooming and animal training and as a home occupation, you can limit in the definitions the number of animals. And then if you want it to be like in a commercial setting, then maybe you want to add more additional animals at a time.
I'm sorry. Could you put in the definition to be determined by impact? So that when you're reviewing the application, if it's going to be one at a time, and you know it's small or, you know, not high-impact?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, that's why I said I'd ask for like that business plan, because if it's one person doing pet grooming, they're typically going to do one at a time unless somebody has two dogs, and then they might bring them together. But, you know, if somebody's bringing all four of their dogs that they're allowed to have in the city for grooming at one time, I think that groomer is going to be very, or cats are going to be very busy for that day, because that's a lot of animals to groom or to train.
And so my point was, though, if it isn't stated, then it's a subjective decision.
And again, that's where I think if you want to go, if, add to the definitions, if it's a home occupation, you can limit the number of animals to be groomed or trained at a time. And if it's a commercial business, again, not a home occupation, you could add, you could do no limit at the number of animals or increase the number of animals. Does that make sense? So if like, if I have a home occupation and I'm training animals, you know, I'm going to train a pig, because I just, Babe, the movie came to my head, to herd sheep, that maybe it's like, okay, maybe I should only have, you know, train one or two animals at a time in my backyard. But if I have a larger commercial area, maybe I could train four or five animals at a time. If I'm grooming a cat at my house, I maybe only want one or two at a time, but if I have a commercial space, I have probably more employees that I can handle three or four or more animals at a time for grooming. I think that's where you can make that distinction, if that is something you're concerned about.
Is that something that we'd get back to the commission to look at?
No. We would be able to handle that here with our comments with the city planner and the solicitor. But we, I think what the city planner is saying is, if your head's on home occupancy, that's what we just discussed on November 19, we'd be discussing some of the conditions there. But if you're a commercial operation, you're in a commercial zone, are you allowed to have a kennel? Right now, no.
No.
No at all.
Correct.
So we've got, we've got a variety of questions to answer, and I think one of your short sheets that you presented was really helpful, like you could do this, or this, or this. One of the things in the definition of kennel is, even as it is now, I would prefer if it said which animals are boarded overnight. Because in a commercial situation, if I'm going to groom an animal, I might have to board two of them while I'm grooming. I mean, so that's different than home occupancy. So boarding, I don't mean kennel, you know, I don't mean overnight. But I want to make sure that they're safe. And that the business could actually, I mean, we have a lot of dogs in Lewis. So I want to know if you.
Can I just clarify? Janelle, rather than put those restrictions on the number of animals in the definition, those are the types of things that are based on the applications, right? So individual applications, where you want to put restrictions on individual applications as opposed to putting it in the ordinance underneath the definitions, seems to be the most logical thing to do, right? So as the applicant comes in, depending on where they're placed, you can put restrictions on one animal an hour, two animals an hour, whatever it may be, in the individual application.
It's better to do that in definitions.
Or per day.
Yeah.
It was just, it was a recommendation, because there was some concern about it being arbitrary. So if you put something in the code as to the number of animals, like per day or at a time, it was, I was just trying to provide multiple options for everyone to consider to have as much information as possible.
I think that's just a little bit, it takes a little bit more foresight than we're capable of doing right now, figuring out exactly what the restrictions should be on the number of animals. Rather than look at, hey, particularly neighborhoods, you're going to want to have one dog at a time, or, you know.
Well, I think the same with an accountant. You know, you could say, you know, you can only have seven clients a day.
Exactly. It comes down to individual application.
Well, the only, one of the critical differences is that the client isn't going to bark, right? Whereas the person operating a dog grooming, there's always the potential that the.
Well, the dog's barking everywhere.
I understand.
I don't know what the hell that.
Although, Councilman Mercer, you could leave an accountant's office screaming.
Yeah. That's true. But that's outside of the public.
But here's the other thing, that when you're, when you're talking about limiting, so, you know, I'm not sure that you, you need to consider that if you're doing grooming, that if there's three short-haired dogs and one long-haired dog, that there's a timing that's going to take to groom a long-haired dog as opposed to short-haired for a day. So I'm not sure telling them how many they can do a day is.
Is not necessarily a metric that works. Another thing is, by city ordinance, you can have four, and they could be barking all at the same time. You can have four dogs. Is that correct in our city ordinance?
Yeah, you can.
And they could all be barking at the same time. I'm not saying that's a good thing. I'm just saying that.
Again, I think, Trina, I think that comes down, again, to the individual applicant, right? Now, working with the individual applicant, they know how many I can handle. I got long dogs, long-haired dogs coming in, and I know how many I can handle at a time.
I also think that there are hours of consideration, too, that we can look at.
Yep.
You know, that, I mean, we have limitations, lawn service on weekends in the season. I know that I almost violated that, but thank goodness I called the city on it so that I didn't have my landscaper there on a Saturday. Like, there are a lot, we have tools, and the city planner will have those tools. And it's because she's going to hear about each business. We're not going to be the arbitrator on business by business.
Well, the ordinance said seven to seven.
Unless it comes up, unless it comes up that they want to bring it forward.
But, so that said seven to seven, but you'd be able to moderate that?
Yes. Especially if we've got neighbor concerns, if you hit that potential impact, and the neighbor's like, hey, I sleep until eight o'clock. Can you not have, you know, your tax clients coming or somebody picking up your birthday cake until 8:30? If we can make that an agreement, you can be baking at eight o'clock in the morning, finishing those decorations for that yummy birthday cake. But you just can't have a client come pick it up and, you know, until 8:30.
Until 8:30. Right. Okay. So what if we table this to November 19? But let's hear what, let's give direction to the solicitor and to the city planner. You've already heard some directions related to the methodology, the ordinance of impact-based. We've heard from Councilman Elder, we want to get information up on our website so people can read the American Planning Association guide. And then I think we do need that checklist of the things that you will use in your arbitration, okay? Like hours, neighbors' impact input. But on this one, to the solicitor and to the planner, based on what you've heard, I think you might want to come back with clarification on these definitions. And it sounds like what everybody wants is some kind of guardrail, not more than, or, when you first said it, I thought you were talking about the weight of a dog, which you really meant was how many.
Well, yeah, I didn't know, you know, some businesses would maybe keep two to the side and have one go out. In some facilities, that might work really well, but in some, you might just want to do one at a time.
So I think we're, I don't, I'm not going to speak for all of us, because we're not voting, but it seems like we do like the clarity that LPC came forward with to make the animal kennel more defined and take out the things that are not as kennel, right? What's in the red and add it in the blue. I think we're there. So in animal training and pet grooming, we're just looking at, is there any other parameters? Or you may say, the parameters are going to be placed in the condition, okay? So what I would say to our city planners, think through that process a little bit and differentiate it for us on, in the home business application, I would do this. In a commercial, you know, a commercial district, that's a different, that's different. So I think you have to come back with that clarity for us. Here's how I would put those guardrails up, council, and then we can look at the whole package. Is that fine with everybody? Yep? Okay. Okay. All right. We are ready for public comments. Commissioner Keane, do you want another public comment? No. I was thinking, I think you've been the star of tonight. Okay, anyone in the room for a public comment?
I'll do it later.
You want to do it later? Could you like to be the last commenter?
No.
Yes, you do.
I'll be the first.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tripp.
Let's see my notes. Cary Tripp, Park Avenue. I urge you to own your responsibilities as the mayor and city council and vote no to the Level Two and Three attempts to expand home businesses in Lewis's residential and historic district. I say it again, people move to and buy in Lewis because they like its sleepy historic nature. Our residents are in bed by 8:00 p.m. Since when has our city's pro-business needs taken over the rest of the residents' dreams to come to a sleepy town and get away from the pressures? This proposal will remove the traditional separation between work and home life, and it's the latter, our home life, that Lewis citizens treasure. Council knows that. You wrote it into the city charter. So why does council think it's in the residents' best interest to take away the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhoods? Rich Ince was right. We want to preserve our residential nature of our neighborhood. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. Zoning is the superpower of local government. If you give it away today, you will not get it back. And there's a reason for zoning. Commercial buildings require licenses so you can oversee safe operations of businesses and keep the public safe for the common good. Commercial buildings are purpose-built to withstand the extra impacts of business. Purpose-built commercial space also has the necessary parking. Even if you think expanding businesses is a good idea, it's not ready for approval, as Councilman Albert Elder just said, until the city fixes its parking problems with a coherent plan. I hear that under this proposal, Lewis is trying to keep up with the times and the modern approach. But that tension is resolved with the no-impact Level One proposal with no physical presence. The legal trend of keeping with the times concerns the growth of online-only businesses that have a minimal physical presence. While I applaud the mayor to court the younger generation of Lewis, the reality is, good luck with the cake baker buying into our million-dollar neighborhood. I worry when I hear today that dog grooming is a possible Tier Two level. What is Level Three? If I tan pig hides in my backyard or pull a food truck into my driveway? There is a reason that HOAs don't allow home businesses, and the city should not too. I also worry the alleged belief that communication with neighbors will resolve issues. Tell that to the two neighbors who sold their homes next to the proposed dog groomer. Finally, I end where I started. Since when does Lewis want to be modern? Who moved here because they want to be modern? When World Atlas listed us as a tourist destination last week, did I miss the part of the article where it said, come to Lewis for a week here so you can be next to a dog groomer? No. It's saying our praises because we're established in 1631, so come for our history and our beaches.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, in the public in the room? Yes, come forward, please.
Hi, my name's Sheffroth. I live at 207 Red Cedar Drive. I come here today asking for help. I live in Lewis Waterfront Preserve, and our development is not complete yet. We're behind schedule. My block of six homes that I'm part of, there is a, every time it rains, there's a lake behind our homes. So I spoke to my HOA. I don't feel like I'm getting anywhere, so I don't know what the regulations are, so I'm coming here for help, if anything you can help me with, who I can go to or talk to regarding my situation. Also, they dug up the curbs. Evidently, the city came out, the curbs weren't up to par. It looks worse now than it was before they dug up the curbs. I called, I stopped by here, and they gave me the card for John Ward, the business building official. So I called him, he called me back. He answered most of my questions, told me to go to the HOA. Well, my HOA's really nothing they can do. City planner, they said that there's no leverage that we have as a community. So I called today, and I spoke to Board of Public Works, and they put me in contact with a guy named Charlie who does the plumbing inspection, because one of my questions were, usually, my old home in PA, when the water line broke the plane in the house, there's an automatic shut-off. My shut-off's on the second floor. So I said, well, if something goes wrong... So Charlie's a phenomenal guy, answered all my questions. So I asked that question to Mr. Warden, and he directed me to those people. I don't know what code is. Like, I don't know what code is for my neighborhood and what's going to get done. So Mr. Ward told me, before they release the bonds, the city's going to come out and inspect. So I don't know what they're going to inspect for. Because if the water shut-off valve is on the second floor, and I have a problem in my home, I can't shut the water off if it's between the shut-off valve and the street. Who do I call? Because then I'll access to it if there's another valve. You know, Envy Homes, they're supposed to be very, very good. If it wasn't for John Tenowski, who lives in the city of Louis, who's a warranty guy, he's phenomenal, phenomenal guy. He, but this is an issue. So I've called Chesapeake Farming, I've called the city, I've talked to people. I'm at Wit's End. My neighbors and I are at Wit's End, because our six homes, there's issues with drainage. And this is going, we made settlement in March, we're in November, and it doesn't seem like there's any rush to get the neighborhood done. All the homes are built. So I come here today asking for help. So I came to your last meeting when you had about the trees-
Yep.
-over there, because I'm concerned about the bridge. My wife walks seven miles, you might see her every morning, she's all over this town. And-
Thank you for, thank you for your comment. We don't engage in public comment, but it doesn't mean that we don't engage afterwards.
Okay.
Okay? So we have your information, because our building official has the information. So our city manager, I can see by she shaking her head, she'll follow up.
Okay.
We just, we can't, but we're glad you came forward, because that is one of the reasons why we have public comments.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
And I thank you all.
Thank you.
I've been coming here since 1984, and we decided to buy here. It's a great town.
Great.
It's a great town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our city manager, you have all that, Trina. Okay. Yes?
Steven Matthews, 405 Savannah. I like all the work that the LPC committee did and the subcommittee. Well, I was at all those meetings for the whole year. You know, that was great work, phenomenal stuff. I do have a concern. I applaud the idea of trying to solve things at the lowest level and getting people to talk to their neighbors because of a communication issue, but I would just like to say anecdotally that that's how this whole thing started. Before we came to the first, very first city council meeting with Mayor Williams, and we tried, we asked for it to be added to the old code, we took our neighbors in, the ones who have since moved, brought them into the house, showed them what we did, we talked to them on their porch, and we did that neighbor building. And then we got slammed from then on, and it's been a year now. Like, we, the door got shut on our face so hard, it spun our heads. And so I applaud that. I don't think that it's, what I really don't like about that especially is asking your neighbors what you can do with your property. It's our property. I don't get asked if you can adopt four dogs, you can go do that, and it's none of my business. Why do I not get that same respect with what I'm doing with my property, especially if you have a limited commercial property? You know? So that brings me to a second point. This is the city of Louis. Cities are for businesses. What better place to have a business than a commercial property? Limited commercial, historic as it may be, we already, because of existing code, cannot turn it commercial because of the restrictions on things such as off-street parking requirement. That already limits what we can do. To further limit that and say we can't run a home business in a commercial property really doesn't sit well with me. And then the last thing, talking about dogs in general, we're not, we're not talking about, you know, building robots here and, you know, testing them on the street, we're talking about grooming dogs. This is a dog-friendly city. We have dogs on the beach after, after season, and this fits with our community and is a community need that can be done locally, right here at home. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes. And then Blue will look online.
Thierry Poirot, Harborview Road. I wanted to wait for this intervention before I spoke. I would like you to look when you're going to review the ordinance on home occupation, which by the way is home occupation, it's not home businesses, to address the, what Ms. Carrie said earlier, right? The activity of dog grooming has been singled out in the sense that it requires systematic CU, conditional use, or administrative review process, more exactly. This is the only activity which has been singled out for that, for that type of administrative process ex ante. Everybody else doesn't have to go through that process. So I can understand where, if we were dealing with exotic animals, you know, like grooming pets such as tigers and lions, which some people have, and, and they are not even on the list of prohibited occupations here, okay? So theoretically, somebody could, could put a request for lion grooming. So I think, to the extent that the activity is a home occupation, in other words, it's the occupation of the person, there are no employees, I think it would be feasible without creating a problem for the neighborhoods, for the city council to decide that as long as only one animal, which is non-exotic, is groomed at any given time, that should not require systematic administrative process. Now, if you turn it into a business, if you have employees, for instance, or if you groom more than one dog at a time, now that becomes a business, it's not an occupation anymore, then I think it would be warranted to have the administrative process systematically. But if you have only one animal at a time, if the animal is not exotic or dangerous, then I think it would be appropriate to say that it is in category two, as it is, but without the systematic preapproval. I'm going to go on another topic, so in the 29 seconds that I have left, regarding the discussions that was, that happened regarding the flooding here. I think we discussed at some point the possibility of modifying the code, unless it's already in there, to require that developer actually post a bond, which would be maintained for a certain period of time, maybe one year, until we are really sure that all the curbs and, and other facilities that they must install have been, have been put in place, and then, and only then, the bond would be released.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room? Yes. And then we'll go to online.
Hi, my name is Sarah Prieta, 405 Savannah. I kicked off this home occupation code. I just want to reiterate that the previous mayor, Williams, stated that when the Louis Planning Commission was to review this code, it was to not take into consideration any applicant, which obviously was mine for dog grooming, pet grooming. And then we have it on record, and I will bring it to the workshop, that Mr. Keen had put in the low-impact category, that for animal-based businesses, that we should have an automatic administrative process, because our neighbors had urged him to put that on there, or, you know, he put it there because of me and because of the neighbors, when in fact that he should have actually not had my application process, or the application for dog grooming should not have been in that whole thing. So I think to, we need to remove in the low-impact process for animal-based businesses, the administrative process, to make it fair and to what the previous mayor had stated, you know, when we went over this home occupation code, not to take into consideration my application. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online that would like to make a comment? If so, raise, oh, yes, we do have Sue. Okay, go ahead, and Blue's going to open it up. Cynthia Hill.
Hi, good evening. I'm at 403 Savannah Road, a residential home zoned for limited commercial use. Historically, the city's interpretation of this zoning has prohibited kennels and similar animal-based businesses due to potential impact on the residential character. Over the past year, the city worked to revise the code to distinguish grooming from kenneling. While this effort is well-intentioned to provide flexibility for home occupations, the draft changes have been disproportionately shaped by a single-use case, animal grooming, and I would say with a very important distinction, animal grooming in a row house. This is a non-issue in a single-family home. Every adjacent neighbor, along with several former and nearby residents, has expressed opposition to this proposed business in this location. These concerns are consistent, longstanding, and grounded in reasonable worries about neighborhood disruption, property values, and quality of life. By contrast, the applicants at 405 Savannah have engaged in personal attacks and divisive behavior, including the use of noise machines and surveillance cameras aimed towards neighboring homes, referencing when neighbors are not home in online forums, public comments misrepresenting neighbors and their pets, and a frequent demand to strict adherence to process, even though they have repeatedly undertaken home modifications without required permits, most recently attempting to install exterior metal doors. These actions have unfortunately eroded trust and demonstrate the type of behavior and conflict that would likely continue if a business were permitted to operate there. This block of Savannah Road consists of historic closely spaced row houses. We share walls, plumbing, and entrances. We have extremely limited parking and a very close proximity to Bebe Hospital, one of Louis's busiest areas. Introducing a commercial animal business, even one labeled low-impact, is simply not compatible with the structural and environmental realities. The noise, traffic, and odors associated with grooming activity cannot be dismissed as minimal in this dense historic district. We respectfully urge the city to look beyond a narrow interpretation of the revised code. The intent of limited commercial zoning is to balance opportunity with protection of residential integrity, not to create loopholes for disruptive uses. We believe the city can and should affirm its original decisions that rejected animal-based businesses at this address. Doing so would uphold the character of safety and livability of our beautiful historic neighborhood. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Our goal is not personal opposition, it's a principled stand for the rights of tax-paying homeowners and the preservation of the character of historic Louis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? I think there was someone else had there. It says iPhone? No. So it says iPhones, so you have to say who you are if you want to make a comment. We can't, we can't ask an iPhone to make comments. You have to tell us who you are.
Hi. This is Robert Huber, 407 Savannah Road. I live on the other side of the partitioner. I purchased my house back in 2021 as a place to retire. From the very beginning, I was truly loved this, loved this community. The neighbors I met were warm, welcoming, and even developed a warm friendship with many of my neighbors, including my next-door neighbor, Elaine Conway, who often invited me to her house for gatherings. The experience changed after Elaine's daughter, Sarah, and her son-in-law, Steven Matthews, moved into the property next door. When I first met them, they were friendly and pleasant, and we exchanged phone numbers. Not long after that, they began an extensive renovation. Throughout the process, I never once complained about the noise, dust, or disruption. I trusted that everything was being done properly and in accordance with city regulations. Unfortunately, later I discovered that this was not the case. I learned that they excavated under their front porch without a permit, and I am concerned that other work may have, also have been completed without necessary approval. Additionally, I understand that Sarah was previously cited for operating an unlicensed grooming business, and it appears that she may be attempting to restart this business in the same residential location. I deeply am concerned about the prospect of living next to an unlicensed commercial operation, especially one that disregards permits, regulations, and requirements. When the idea of the business was raised among the neighbors, Sarah claimed that she did not have my phone number to contact with me, a statement that was clearly untrue, as both her and her husband and her mother had my number. Unfortunately, this is part of a broader pattern of misleading statements and escalating tension. My relationship with these neighbors have deteriorated significantly due to the repeated verbal confrontation, false complaints, and ongoing harassment. Despite this, I have continued to act respectfully and responsibly for this instance. When Steven once texted me about a noise concern, I addressed the issue immediately. This situation has become so unpleasant that I had applied for an Airbnb permit, a rental permit, but ultimately decided not to rent my property as I could not subject guests to such hostile environment. And so the city isn't going to get any money from this. I never rented the home. Sadly, I have now listed my home for sale and can no longer tolerate the ongoing tension and disruption. I respectfully urge the city council and the mayor to deny any permits or approvals related to this property, particularly those in connection to a dog grooming business or any unlicensed activities. I also request whether the current renovations completed with the required of the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the homeowners have attempted to install unapproved front doors and have made other altercations inconsistent with their historic district.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comment, and we do appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Thank you. Is there someone else online? I think there is someone. Patricia Lasik. Lasik. Yes, Patricia? We've opened up your mic. Patricia, if you'd like to make a comment, state your name and address. Patricia, your hand is raised. If you'd like to make a comment, you need to state your name and your address, please. Your phone is unmuted at this point.
Smoke signal.
Yeah, we're trying our best. Okay. I don't think we can do that. All right. No other comments online? No other comments in the room? No? Okay. I think we have our work to do. We've heard some additional public comments, and so city solicitor and city staff, we're not talking about any one applicant. I just want to remember, remind everybody, we're talking about an ordinance, impact ordinance. We're talking at the highest, highest level and definitions. All right. Anybody else? Nope? If not, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And could, could I at least have a, could you say something a little more about the town?
I, I think, I think our very organized and terrific managing mayor-
There you go. Say no more.
Running a very efficient, very meeting.
All in favor of your, yes.
Did we win anything from the newspaper?
Yeah, really, Bill. We did it.
No, Bill's a tough negotiator.
Oh, he didn't offer-